Commissioners, we'll begin the meeting by asking Commissioner Jim Peacock to lead us in a word of prayer and then we'll remain standing for the President, please.
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity that you have provided all of us to live in the greatest country on earth. We pray that you would give us wisdom and guidance that any decisions we make will enhance the lives of citizens of our county. Lord, we pray that you would look over the people in Michigan as they go through this terrible incident and also give the leaders of our country wisdom and guidance as they deal with the issues that are facing them. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The President, we have said it to the record, we would like to which stands one thing, our God, invincible, great of the dead.
Before we get into the meat of our agenda, I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting. We've got a fairly lengthy agenda today, so I'd like to remind you, if you come to the podium, to try to keep your comments as concise and brief as possible. I'd like to wish everyone Happy Valentine's Day and unlike myself, I hope you remembered to get your wife something for Valentine's Day. First item of business is the approval of the agenda. Ms. Daniels, we have any additions or deletions?
We have one addition under Section 4, Number 25, board direction on updated Spring Creek litter ordinance.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
The movement, Jim.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any other questions? Clarifications here, none. All those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving into Section 1 on the agenda, it's recognitions, resolutions, and presentations. Ms. Austin, we've got years of service awards.
Actually, we're going to start with the employee of the month. And the employee of the month for February 2023 is Blaine Barfield.
So I'll just read the proclamation quick. So whereas Jackson County has established an employee of the month program to recognize one employee to represent the various departments, and whereas Blaine Barfield began his employment with Jackson County on October 27, 2021, and serves as a paramedic firefighter for Jackson County Fire and Rescue, and he has been selected as employee of the month for February 2023 for the standards that he has displayed in the performance of his job duties. Whereas Blaine recently graduated the paramedic program at Chipola College, and since his promotion, Blaine has been involved in community outreach and other special projects. In January of this year, Blaine represented the Fire Rescue Department by speaking on fire prevention and safety for seniors at the East Side Baptist Church, Joy Club. In addition to his fire prevention presentation, Blaine educated and assisted the club members on establishing an emergency contact in their cell phone. This can be very valuable information for first responders during a critical time. Blaine displays a positive attitude in the department, always eager to work and train others. He enjoys and excels in public education. And whereas Mr. Barfield has proven to be a dedicated employee that handles issues that arise in a timely and efficient manner, he has built trust with his coworkers and they know that they can count on him. Mr. Barfield sets a good example for other employees with his work ethic and has proven to be a valuable asset to Jackson County Fire and Rescue. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida commends and congratulates Blaine Barfield on his selection as employee of the month for February 2023.
We appreciate all your hard work and dedication and how much you do by speaking various organizations. I'm very much.
So next, we do have service of years of service recognition award, and we have 12 awards that we be presenting this morning. And so as I called it, somewhere, I miss your call, but has your award and a t-shirt that we made special for your years of service. So first, we have Chris Stewart. Yes, you can just sit it over there. I don't know where it's sitting. Next, we have Willam Daniels. Ms. Daniels currently holds the position of County Administrator for Jackson County Board of County Commissioners, and she is being recognized for 15 years of continuous service. Next, we have Hunter Potts. Mr. Potts currently holds the position of Administrative Services Director for Jackson County Administration, and he is being recognized for five years of continuous service. Justin Bragg, I know Mr. Bragg couldn't be here today, so Mr. Bragg. Keisha Dawson. Keisha Dawson, she currently holds a position of service with Jackson County Correctional Facility, and she has been recognized for 10 years of continuous service. You guys probably need online to vote. Next, we have Mr. Sims, Ladexter Sims. Mr. Sims currently holds the position of Correctional Officer with Jackson County Correctional Facility, and has been recognized for five years of continuous service. Christopher Bader. Mr. Bader. They're on the wagon. Lynn Price. I know she's out. Lynn couldn't be here either. John Nick Sellers. They're all on duty. Busy saving lives. Joel Frederick. I, you know what? I got it wrong. Skip to one. Mr. Frederick currently holds the position of Equipment Operator 2 with Road and Bridge Department. He is recognized for five years of continuous service. James Anderson. Mr. Anderson currently holds the position of Equipment Operator 3 with Jackson County Road and Bridge Department, and has been recognized for five years of continuous service. And last but not least, we have Ms. Carrie Williams. Ms. Carrie currently holds a position of Business Manager for the Road and Bridge Department, and she has been recognized for 20 years. Thank you, Carrie. Right?
Before we leave, on behalf of the entire Board of County Commissioners, we really appreciate your dedication to the Jackson County, the hard work, and why you come to work every day and give it to best and to represent Jackson County very well. So we really appreciate it.
All right, moving on down the agenda, the last item under recognitions, resolutions, and presentations is a board approval of the FDOT LAPP supplemental agreement. Ms. Daniels?
Yeah, before we move on, did we get a motion on the employee of the month?
No, we did not.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of employee of the month and give him, does he want the check?
$200.
$200 check.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for that reminder. Ms. Daniels, item number three.
This is a request for board approval of the FDOT LAPP supplemental agreement and authorizing resolution for Baptist College Sidewalk Project. This is adding an additional bit of sidewalk to that project, and FDOT is providing the additional funds.
Chairman, I make a motion to go through this request.
Motion by Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any other questions? Clarifications? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That concludes the Section 1. We'll move into Section 2, which is a public hearing. What we'll do is, we'll actually, we've got item number 1, which is the board review and approval of a small-scale amendment. We'll close out the regular meeting and open up a public hearing. Ms. Daniels, you want to bring us up to speed on this first item?
Yes, this is a request for a small-scale amendment for land use change of 4.578 acres from conservation to agriculture, two parcels located on the west side of Old US Road, approximately .69 miles north of the intersection of Highway 90 and Old US Road in unincorporated Jackson County. And on January 23, 2023, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this small-scale amendment to the Board of County Commissioners.
Before we ask for public comment, do we need to read the, read it by title?
This one does not have, oh, yes, it does. I will read it. It's an ordinance amending, ordinance Number 91-6, which adopted the Jackson County Conference of Plan to provide for the adoption of a certain small-scale amendment, or a small-scale future land use map amendment to the Jackson County Conference of Plan, providing for severability and for repealer, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak either for or against this small-scale amendment that was described? Seeing no hands. Brett, is there anyone, well, we have one in the audience. If you don't mind, please come forward to the podium. If you don't mind, state your name for the record.
My name is El Jackson, on behalf of Manuel Solano. The reason he wants to get it changed is because he has a disabled son, and family members would say, move more trailers on the property to set up one, four trailers on the property, sir, and family members would help take care of his disabled son. The reason for that is because his son is incapable of taking care of himself, and with the four family members on the tra, in each trailer, would continue to help keep his job and work and also take care of his son at the same time. So with doing this, his son would get a better education from helping with, you know, the son and keeping family members of doing so without getting outside help. We really would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak either for or against? Brett, is there anyone online indicating that they'd wish to speak regarding this issue?
There's anyone online that would like to speak for or against this issue? They may be recognized by pressing star nine on their phone or the raise hand feature on Zoom. I see no hands.
Okay. With that being said, we'll close out the public hearing and go back into a regular session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission. This request.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to approve the, to go along with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board to approve the request. Second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your comments. Item number two is the request, board review of a general development order for the Mariana Arcade. Oh, yeah. Excuse me. Thank you, Commissioner McKinney. Before we take this up, we'll, for conversation, we'll close out the regular session and open up a public hearing. This is the board review of a general development order for Mariana Arcade. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, this is a board review. So the general development order application was submitted to operate an adult arcade to be known as Mariana Arcade in the Crossroad Shopping Center at 2800 Highway 71, former location of the Goodie Store in unincorporated Jackson County. On January 23, 2023, the Planning Commission recommended denial to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak either for or against the general development order? Okay. If you don't mind, come forward and state your, state your name for the record, please.
Roxanne Wirskey.
Roxanne, what was your last name?
Wirskey.
Okay. If you don't mind, spell it for the record.
W E I R S K Y.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. I wanted to address a few of the issues that came up last time.
Okay. And when you say last time at the public, the Planning and Zoning Board meeting?
Yes. They had concerns about, you know, things going on and the police needing to be called and such. And historically, maybe 10 years ago, yes, that was a problem, but now we have armed security, two officers, one inside, one outside, and it cuts down, and we've not had any issues, any, any issues at any of them, since they brought on, you know, the security. So it will be armed security. The other, you know, issue was the types of games. We're only asking for fish games, and they're fish tables. It's a skill game, and you just, you gotta hit fish and win points. I mean, Dave and Buster's have them. Most of the, because we do go and, you know, we have several arcades, and we usually need an amusement license for them. I don't know if that, but I don't think that the crime rate is going to increase at all because of our establishment. If anything, it's going to cut down because you have an armed officer during the hours outside, you know. People feel very safe. They, if it's dark out, they'll walk them out to their cars, make sure everybody is safe. And then they were asking if they will get monetary, you know, money given back to them. And we offer prizes for the points that they win, and it ranges from TVs, different types of electronics, games, gift cards, you know, stuff like that, is how they redeem their prizes. I didn't know if you'd had any more questions or concerns that I might be able to address.
Any questions of Ms. Wirskey while she's got the podium? We'll hear Mr. Commissioner Peacock.
Ma'am, how many of these arcades do you have?
Me personally?
Your organization?
Well, there's probably, I can't speak for them because they're, we're partners, and they have casinos in different places. So probably 10.
And where are they located?
All over the place.
In, in Florida?
Summer in Florida, yes.
And?
Down like Port St. Lucie, over Bradenton, Tampa. They're all
Where else?
Lake City. We have Live Oak.
No, no.
Lake City has since closed down.
Florida and other places. Where are the other places?
I don't know where their other places are. I know they have them outside of Florida. I think Pennsylvania.
Okay. You said armed guards. Who is, who are the armed guards?
Well, it'll be a licensed and bonded company.
You're going to hire private security?
Yes.
And these games, you say they'll win prizes?
They're fun.
You collect points and win prizes?
Yes.
And it's a game of chance, correct?
Yes.
And how much do you have to pay to play?
Whatever they want to play. They could play $1, they could play $100, whatever they want to play. You know, when you go, I don't know if you ever been Dave and Buster's, you know, you go in, you could play all the games. You can play as much or as little as you want to play. There's no limit on how much you can play.
Okay. What's the? Go ahead. What's the closest proximity facility you have operating that now closest to Jackson County?
Real good list area. I'm only newer to Florida, so I wanted.
Sounds like Lake City might be, did you ask where the closest?
Where?
You said you had one in Live Oak?
We, we did.
Yeah.
Yes.
You did. What happened?
Um, they're going through sort of what y'all went through. I guess you had the arcades a while back. Well, they're remodeling, you know, how they're structuring them. They're going to let them back, but they just closed them so that they could get rules and regulations in place because there were really none. But we are, we got the word that they're going to allow them to reopen.
Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none. Do you wish to approach the podium and speak as well? Okay. All right. Any other, any other?
But that's why when she was kind of lost it, the one that's actually open now, opposed to y'all would be Wildwood.
Wildwood. All right. Thank you. All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak either for or against?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. If you don't mind, come to the podium, state your name, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Larry Vassford, State Attorney on behalf of the people of the state of Florida and certainly the citizens of Jackson County. I had the benefit of being here on January the 23rd, when the lady made some representations to the Planning Commission, and those concerns that I have then are the same ones that I have now, and perhaps the ones that were shared by the Planning Commission when they denied this request. On that evening, lady that was just here told or announced to the Planning Commission that these fish table games were, when you played those, you would be awarded prizes, Lotto tickets, and cash. These were her words that night. She also used the term casino games, and we've heard reference to these games being in casinos again today. The description that was given of the games that evening, and even to the lady, I think, I don't know if it was Strickland or who it was, was vague, and it is still vague because there are a number of different fish games. There's some games called Fish Catch, Crab King, Golden Dragon, Deep Sea, Volcano Man, Fish Chopper, and Emily's Treasure. And if you go on the internet, all you have to see is there's a whole bunch of these games that are considered casino games and internet games. Now, we still do not know if they intend to connect these to an internet. These fish table games where people play against each other and get prizes that are awarded, this fits the definition or seems to fit the definition of slot machines, where it is a device where you pay money to play, and then in exchange for that, you can win prizes and/or cash, and that's what was represented today. You can't get around the definition saying that this involves skill, whatever skill involved is minimum, and there was an admission just this morning that it involves a game of chance. If it is a slot machine, and it appears to fit that broad definition of a slot machine, then slot machines are only authorized in eligible facilities, such as paramutual facilities that were in effect when they allowed this by constitution and by law down in Miami. Slot machines are not even allowed over in Gretna at that gambling facility because those were not in effect at the time, and they're still not allowed over in, in Gretna. The local citizens, as you recall, voted to allow that form of gambling, and they used to have barrel racing over there, so it would try to come in under the paramutual wagering. They don't have those barrel racing, I don't think anymore, but they do have gambling over there, the gambling tables. But it's my understanding, they do not have, they're not allowed by law to have slot machines, and there are no fish tables over there. There was a representation back in January that these games were somewhere located within five or 10-mile radius. Well, they're not over there at Gretna, and they're not up at, what's the facility up there in Dothan?
Bingo place.
The bingo place. I don't go to it, so I'm not familiar with that place. So those are our concerns. Also, they are not what is, is termed vintage arcade games or corn-operated amusement machines such as pinball, video machines, pool tables, jukeboxes, some of the things that perhaps we played when we were younger, like Pac-Man, Asteroids, Gallica, those type of games where you play purely for the entertainment, and you don't get, you get points, you might be able to play some more games, but there's no cash money awarded for those. As some of you may recall, back in 2011, we had an internet cafes, at least two, that opened up in Jackson County. We conducted an investigation with the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department at the time, the Mariana Police Department, and we determined that they had slot machines, these video slot machines that were being operated. After we conducted the investigation, we made that presentation to the grand jury here in Jackson County, and they determined that these electronic games of chance were illegal. They represented a detriment to the citizens of Jackson County, and they were a public nuisance. We closed those machines down, and those people went away. That was just an attempt by the gambling establishments to look for loopholes around our gambling box. I don't make the laws. I'm here to enforce the law, and we believe that this, based on the representations, would constitute slot machines. In addition, they're not regulated, apparently these type of games are not regulated by the Department of Business and Professional Regulations, and I don't know if they're regulated by the Department of Revenue. I don't know how they would be regulated based on any of these representations that have been made. I have spoken with the sheriff. I've also spoken with the Mariana Police Chief, and they too are concerned about allowing an establishment like this in our area. Those are the comments that I have today. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions that any of you have.
Just a real quick question, and I came into the Planning and Zoning Board late, so I missed your presentation at the Planning and Zoning Board where you did address this development order. Was the, the denial from the Planning and Zoning Board, was it based on some of the same concerns that you had, from what you understood?
Yes, sir, it was. I believe one of the gentlemen that was sitting over here, I forgot his name, sitting in the location where Mr. Branch was, or Mr. Peacock was that night, had some of those same concerns, and they pointed out too, ma'am, you say this isn't a slot machine or an illegal machine, but you've made reference to casinos, and they had some of the same concerns. One of the things that was presented to the grand jury, there was a lot of things that were presented to the grand jury before, but one of the concerns that we had in 2011, and the grand jury had in 2011, was the crime associated with these, and at that time, we were talking about internet cafes, where they were saying that basically this is a promotion to sell internet minutes, and you come in and you can incidentally win prizes and money, and that's what they were promoting. Mrs. Jones has won $150 or $750, and they would, they would publicize that. But one of the concerns of law enforcement back then, as well as the State Attorney's Office, was the amount of crime associated with these type of businesses because it was such a cash business operated on cash, and that is why throughout the state of Florida, they were having numerous robberies, people going, coming out with their winnings or going in with money to play, and sometimes robbing the patrons of those establishments. We, along with the First Circuit over in Pensacola, that district, decided that we were not going to allow these establishments to come west of the Appalachia River, and we stopped those, and I think since that happened, there's been other laws, and those internet cafes have pretty much went by the wayside.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Commissioner Peacock.
Mr. Vassford, thank you for your information. Has there been a ruling? Mr. Vassford, thank you for your information. Um, has there been a ruling from the Attorney General on this issue?
On fish table games?
Right.
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Peacock. I know that uh, when we were talking and originally that I had seen this perhaps advertised as an adult arcade and I did some uh, checking around on adult arcades. Uh, over in the First Circuit, um, perhaps in Santa Rosa or Walton County, I understand that they have uh, at least one or did have one adult arcade where they had these vintage video games. Uh, that was up until nine o'clock, teenagers could come in there after nine o'clock. It was adults only and they did serve alcohol in those facilities. Uh, however, uh, there was, they had those vintage games like I was discussing earlier, Pac-Man, pinball and, and things of that nature.
Careful, Larry, you're dating yourself.
Well, yes, sir. Yes, sir, I am. But there was not any award of, of cash um, by winning a game or scoring X amount of points in those places, in that place.
Well, you know, my concern is that, you know, if you're, if you're paying money on a chance of winning either prizes or whether they be cash or whether they be any, it, to me, that fits the gap, the definition of gambling. I mean, it's as simple as I can do it. And uh, I've always been uh, uh, very conscious of trying to uh, support and understand uh, the, the reasoning and the recommendations given by a, a recommending board such as the Planning and Zoning Board and their decision denying this holds a lot of weight with me. Uh, and even without that, I, I would be opposed to this individually. Um, I don't know how any of the other board members feel, but.
We're still in.
Yeah. Any other, any other comments?
She's uh.
Mr. Vassford?
That's all I have. Unless there's some questions, I'd be glad to. Any questions?
Thank you for the information.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, any, anyone else you would like to? Again, make sure that uh, you, you speak into the microphone so that we're picking you up uh, recording wise, if you don't mind. Again, state your name.
Roxanne Wierski.
Thank you.
Um, in reference to me, I was in the context saying adult arcade, internet cafe, casino, it's all interchangeable. People call them all those different names. I wasn't saying it's a casino. I wasn't saying, you know, we're, we're doing an adult arcade. So that was my reference to casino the last time I was here. Um, slot machines? No, they are not slot machines. We do have in other locations, the types of machines that he's talking about, but they will not be here. We are trying to abide by, you know, your they said no, no to the, those types of machines. So we will not have those types of machines. They will not be hooked up to the internet. They're either flat tables or you play on a screen like this and there's, you play against other people around you. And it is chance. It's all up to the machine, what that machine's gonna do and who's gonna hit what. It's not like it's predetermined or you know you're gonna win something. It's not.
I guess my question would be, again, people that, your patrons that come into the place, they're paying money to play a game and if they're lucky enough to, to uh, to win, then they would, they would basically get a prize, whether that's a cash prize or.
Well, they won't be getting cash.
But they'll, they'll be getting something.
Yes.
And to me, that's, that meets the definition of gambling, but in my, in the way I look at it.
Not really. If you look at going to a Tricky Train, you know, where you get the tickets and you go around, you're buying them and you're putting your tickets in and you're gonna get a prize if your, your number is drawn.
Okay, Commissioner Branch has got a question.
Um, the prizes they win, can they redeem those for cash?
No.
So if they win a TV, you gonna have plenty of TVs on hand to hand out if, if you lose ten?
Yes, we will have enough cash and prizes to cover whatever needs doing.
You just said cash and prizes.
We'll have the cash to get the prizes. The prizes will be up, you know, where they can choose from them. And they will not get cash money.
Any other questions? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, anyone else wishing to speak for or against? If you don't mind, come to the podium and state your name clearly for the record?
My name is Starla Simcoe. I'm here on another matter. Um, some of you are familiar with me. I live on forty-four eighty-one Biltshire Road.
Now, is this in reference to what we're talking about now?
Yes, sir, it is. As far as my recollection, Jackson County has never been a place that we welcome to gambling of any size, shape or form. Whether it be a cash prize or whether it be a TV that's worth the value of a cash prize, if you don't have the cash, if you don't have the prize on hand, still gambling. Gambling is gambling and gambling leads to excess of crime. Gambling leads to an excess of a lot of things, none of which are desirable in our county. That's my opinion on the matter.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Brad, is uh, I don't see anyone else in the audience uh, that wishes to speak. Is there anyone online that wishes to speak for or against that you're aware of?
Just to remind those online to use the raise hand feature on Zoom or star nine via telephone if you would like to speak for or against this. I see no hands.
Thanks, Brad. Okay, uh, we'll go out of the public hearing, uh, open up our regulars, uh, open back up our regular uh, meeting and uh, you've got the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we confirm the request of the Planning Commission and deny this request.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to go along with the recommendation of Planning and Zoning Board. Got a second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any other questions? Comments? Clarifications here, none? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Um, that concludes the public hearing portion of our, our meeting. Uh, we'll move down to uh, the community development. Uh, item number one under the Community Development, Section Three is board approval to set a public hearing for a small-scale amendment. Uh, Ms. Daniels?
Yes, this is a change of six point three zero acres from conservation to commercial parcels located nine hundred and three feet east of the intersection of Highway two thirty-one and Dillmore Road. Uh, and the, on February sixth, twenty twenty-three, the Planning Commission recommended approval and we're just asking that this is a public hearing for February twenty-seventh at two o'clock PM.
Twenty-seven?
Yes. Y'all's regular meeting this month will be instead of on a Tuesday, it will be on Monday the twenty-seventh at two o'clock.
Thank you for the reminder. Okay, we've got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to set the public hearing on uh, February twenty-seventh. What time?
Two.
Two o'clock.
Seconds.
Got a second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number two under Community Development is also a board approval to set a public hearing for Project TAP. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, this is a set of public hearing for a general development order to construct ten thousand four hundred and ninety-six square feet foot building. Uh, and it is also requested to be set February twenty-seventh at two o'clock.
Some movement, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Peacock. Uh, any other questions, clarifications? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number three under Community Development is board approval of a variance in Jackson County Court Code of Ordinances. Ms. Daniels?
This is a request for a variance to section forty-two dash sixty-one C to allow recreational vehicle as a temporary dwelling unit on private property while the applicant builds a permanent home. The Planning Commission recommended that uh, this be approved for a one-year timeframe for the RV to be placed on the property.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve this request. Uh, I think we should stipulate that if more time is needed, they can come back to the commission.
Like that's part of.
Extend it if necessary.
Okay, got a motion. Uh, is that part of your?
Yeah, make sure that uh, they understand that if they need more time, if I built a house and it took more than a year.
Could you uh, maybe give them essentially like ninety days, you know, give them, give us ninety day notice before they come back to the board for extension? Could you put that in your motion?
Golly, that request that they come before the board ninety days prior to the uh, expiration of the one-year timeframe.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions? Or clarifications? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Uh, moving into section four, which is reports and requests, uh, item number one is consent agenda items. Uh, A, B and C, A is uh, pay the bills, B is uh, board approval of meeting minutes and item C is board approval of Microsoft contract agreement. Ms. Daniels, anything that needs to be brought up to our attention? Okay, Chair Lentana motion to approve the consent agenda. A motion from Commissioner Crutchfield.
Exactly.
Second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item uh, number two under reports and requests, this is a board approval of newspaper selection for the twenty-twenty-two delinquent tax advertisement. Ms. Daniels?
Ms. Murdock?
How you doing? Good morning.
Morning. Chairman, Commissioners, it's that time of year again where we've got, where we'll soon have a list of delinquent taxes. And accordance to the Florida statute, the Board of County Commissioners shall select the newspaper in which the delinquent taxes are advertised. In the past, the newspapers in Jackson County have been used on a rotational basis. The twenty delinquent list was advertised in the Jackson County Times. The twenty-one list last year was with the Jackson County Floridian. And therefore, in accordance to what has been done in the past, it would be time for the twenty-two delinquent list to be in the Graceful News and I'm requesting that decision to be made for you this morning.
Some movement, Chairman.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney?
I got a question.
Can we get a second before discussion? Second from Commissioner Crutchfield, go ahead.
What's the circulation of the Graceville newspaper? I'm hearing two hundred.
Two hundred?
Two hundred.
Oh, I, I'm not sure. They make more whenever we give them the list. I didn't know that.
So how do we get them out to the people in the county who do not subscribe? I'm not one of the two hundred.
Yeah.
It, I mean, it's a little bit of a concern.
Yes, in, in the past, the post offices would allow the newspapers to leave a stack at all the post offices, but they have stopped that. So they bring uh, us in the courthouse and in all of our branch offices, they bring us a stack of newspapers where people can come pick up.
What's the cost of, of advertising typically? I know it varies from paper to paper, but.
It does vary. It does vary. It averages fifteen thousand.
Could you do it between the two papers we have left?
And do it both papers?
Well, we've not budgeted for two newspapers. Not for two, no. Um, that, that's your decision.
I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, that we either put, you could do a small advertisement referencing uh, on our website or something like that. You don't have to put them all in both papers, but it could be a reference back to the website or something.
You're gonna put them on whose website?
We could put, list them on ours or I don't know if they're, are they listed anywhere?
What we've done when the Graceful News and knowing that it's not as circulated as the others, we have put a notice in the other newspaper saying the delinquent tax roll has been approved to be.
I know we got people that buy these.
We let people know that it's in the Graceful News.
Are we utilizing the social media, your platforms as well?
I'm not sure if they have a social media platform.
And you're talking about the Graceville News?
I don't know.
We've got a motion and a second on the floor. Go ahead.
Good uh, and in the paper where you put in that, that it'd be in the Graceful Paper, could you put there where there could be some picked up? The local place in Mariana, maybe Snead's?
Yeah, we have them in our, yeah.
Frank some over and leave them at City Hall in Snead or some, or you know, like, yeah.
I'm sure the city halls will allow it. We could.
Yeah, that would kind of be a little more circulated. I, I understand that what Mr. Peacock talking about there, you know, you either want to get the public to educate or either, you know, they probably are more people getting in the whole area at the time or the period, which is brilliant.
Well, Florida is gone.
I know, I thought I'd say, I know they're gone, but anyway. Graceful Paper or whatever, but I think they could probably, you know, block some around, you know, and it might be some picked up in some place where a lot of people go in.
Right.
I think the other thing that's beneficial about potentially using the Jackson County Times is they do have a social media platform, so um, you know, they're not just relying on hard copy. Okay, any other questions, concerns? Got a motion?
My concern is lack of circulation. I mean, none of them have a hundred percent circulation.
We don't, we don't need to, I don't think, entertain advertising of both of them because again, that's a, that's a huge cost. What was the reason initially for rotating it? I mean, is it just a?
Just to give every opportunity to the newspaper to have our listing.
Would, have there been any drawback in the past or is it in the Graceville News versus the other papers at the time?
A lot of people don't look at the paper anyway. You know, it's a big list. They see a lot of names. And you know, that's what they know is list of delinquent taxes. Do they go through and look at it? Yes, some people do. Some people don't.
I know that uh, when we're advertising for construction business, a legal requirement that we have to advertise in one of the papers, but what we've seen is uh, uh, we get very little response from that and more of the response comes from uh, Dodge Reports and things like that. So I, I don't know that, you know, we're really reliant on that as much as we used to.
Yeah.
I assume that this is the way you did it in a bag.
Yes, sir. Just a rotational basis.
So how, how did this circulation get out then?
The same way.
You know.
They bring, they've always brought them to the courthouse and to our branch offices.
If they could get some over around Snead there, like, well, brother that way or whatever, you know, and, and maybe do a little ad and say the time, post where some will be.
I think, I think what, what I'm hearing is that uh, what I'm hearing is that if we do move forward with advertising these in the Graceville, that we make an extra effort to try to get the word out, number one, that they are being advertised in the Graceville newspaper and that they are available at other sites as well.
I know and maybe Michelle can elaborate on this. There's legislation in place now to uh, you're talking about the requirements to advertise that would get more social media and not require. Because a lot of people are having the same issue.
I'm not sure if this is one that.
I, I'm not sure.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Any other comments, concerns?
I think this is something we need to visit and budget.
Okay, uh, nothing else being said, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And just take note that um, next year we may want to revisit this, learn budget and, and maybe reassess where we're going with this.
Hopefully up to you. Thank you.
Okay, item uh, number three under section four is uh, board discussion and approval of property acquisition at Endeavor Park. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, Mr. Byron Dickens is here to make the presentation to the board.
Good morning, Mr. Dickens.
Morning. Be here. Uh, wanna first thank you all for your service. Commissioner McKenna, it's good to see you. Commissioner Crutchfield, thank we having formally met. Uh, Chairman Dunne-Fro, Commissioner Brand, it's good to see you again. And last, we're not needs. Commissioner Peacock, it's always a pleasure to see you, sir. Uh, thank you for your service because I I've served in the Marine Corps and the Army and I have yet to uh, understand the strategy, but I figured it out working on Valentine's Day. Working on Valentine's Day, very smart. My anniversary was yesterday, so I'm thinking fourteen years ahead of time, good. Uh, yeah, but, um, before I begin, uh, do we have the slide deck up for you to see? Try to follow you as well on the laptop. Trying to keep it brief. All right, so why I'm here today? Next slide. So sets, next slide, sets twenty twenty and the Emancipation Day Festival of Northwest Florida has been highly focused on. Acquiring property to build and erect the state of the art museums, African American history and cultural arts center in Jackson County. This site would also consist of a cultural landscape and office space for the Emancipation Day Festival of Northwest Florida. I am the president and founder of the Emancipation Day Festival of Northwest Florida, and since our, uh, existence. We have been blessed to have been able to work with all parts of the county. A lot of people in this room have participated, I even have some potential, uh, uh. Cake competition and, and real cook off judges. I had an alternate here, a couple alternates behind me, so we've been able to do a lot of good work, working with the school district as well. Um, next slide. Hit the next one as well. Now, the original site, uh, the original site was planned to be, um, fifty-two fifty-seven Mount Table Road. Which is still alongside District One, uh, coming off of two thirty-one, you'd be with Highway sixty-nine would be the avenue to get that traffic there. It would require title transfer, things of that such, because it's currently, the property is in my name. Um, and I would donate it to Emancipation Day Festival of Northwest Florida. However, uh, there's a lot of work needed to be done, uh, requires conversion to commercial. A lot of, uh, project development type work. Uh, next slide. But it come to my attention that the property at Endeavor Park is. Great unlimited potential to revitalize opportunity and attractions to Jackson County. And I understand that this museum, uh, and I don't want people to judge me negatively, but I am a Cowboys fan. And so I had the luxury of going to, uh, view the stadium, and I tell you, Jerry Jones did an outstanding job. He put every aspect of being a Cowboy fan into that stadium, so whether you were or were not, you would come out saying, well, doggone, they, they pretty tough. And that is what we want to create, we want to create a museum that is inclusive, but it builds pride. There's pride in not only, uh, the history of Jackson County, but who you are as a Jackson County. So no matter who comes out of there, they're gonna ask the question, are you from here? And if not, if you're from here, you're gonna be bragging about it, because believe it or not, people do come here, investors, et cetera, and they ask questions. We want everybody down to the lowest common denominator to be able to say and exemplify how much they're proud of Jackson County. We've just seen a display of great people that have put in years of work and years of service because of what they care and how they see this community. Next slide. So to be clear, what we're requesting is three acres of land adjacent, uh, for, to the former dining hall, so that I'm aware that there is works to erect a additional museum. Uh, Cultural Heritage Museum, as you were, museum or the Jackson County, Jackson Endeavor Museum, I know it has a title. Uh, this land would not just be a museum of African American history, um, it's gonna be a cultural arts center, cultural landscape. This cultural arts center will be the home of the Project Save program. Save is an acronym, stands for surviving, achieving, visualizing, exemplifying. This will cover every base, uh, aside, anything that's not going on at the mirror, it will happen there. So projects and programs such as STEM, music, performing arts, uh, all of these will be an additional school program after school and during the summer. The intent is to have something for our kids to do, boost, uh, their production and their scholastics and school activities. And also create a cultural environment that builds on our future. Right now, we're in works to actually, uh, get Jackson County School District recommended and acknowledged as an exemplary school district for the work that they're doing. Regarding African American history, I've been going on tours, talking to kids, talking about the pride of being an American. And tying it into African American history, because it's my belief, and it is the truth, the fact of the matter, that. Contributions of African Americans to Americans in society is American history. And it should be understood and acknowledged as such. As a matter of fact, we sit on, we're actually in the month of Black History Month. It's my dream, it's my goal, it's my mission to make that not be so. Yes, we go and reflect on these contributions, but every American child should be able to appreciate, love, and honor that. And Jackson County is a very historical district, is one of our very big benefits. Uh, the overall goal of that program is to create social welfare and community growth by engaging at need, not just at-risk children. With all these different programs so that they can project their interests. Another key point that I want to be clear is that the vision of this museum is not just to create a place of inclusivity or pride. But to create a place where it's free for political ideologies. We want to maintain exactly what just happened earlier, that nothing negative influences these kids and influences this community. We want to have a place of exemplification of what is Jackson County and what is not. Uh, so just to touch on some bases, next slide. Um, I note that the museum of, well, I knew you're stretching on the title of it, but the Cultural Heritage Museum is gonna cover a lot of bases. This museum is gonna hit every historical point pre-Florida, uh, exploration to present day. So just to give some context, got two reasons, the first museum, the, the African American History Museum will cover a wide range, beginning with. Uh, everything from the first early explorers, fifteen, thirteen, Prospect Bluff, Fort Mosaic. Even the survivor, survivors of Navarrez, Navarrez Expedition, uh, people like Esteban Nico. Uh, we go into the Underground Railroad, because a lot of people believed that Underground Railroad went north, but most of them came south in the free Spanish territory. Seminoles are a mix of runaway slaves, Creek and Cherokee. Going to emancipation and reconstruction, the Freedmen's Bureau, and our own local Armstrong Purdy, T. Thomas Fortune, Asok Bellamy. It's gold song, we get to talk about segregation and civil rights, the black church and its significance, it was the schools. It was the banks, it was everything that flourished in this area, the black farming, black leaders up until this current day. We have, uh, longest-running commissioners, we have first blacks, and that, and so on, it goes further and further. And we want to tie that connection to every period of American history. So no matter what, we can show our place in every step of the way. In addition to that wide range, we're gonna have a cultural landscape, so I know there's been a lot of, uh, requests, a lot of. Uh, conversations, people coming for requesting, uh, things to be put on the courthouse lawn. But that's not sufficient. At this cultural landscape, we'll have a display, a mural, monument for the colored troops, World War Two colored troops. We'll have one for a tree and, and, and things that people want to exemplify for lynching museums and things of that such. But something that is us, something that is not divisive, but is inclusive. Because of those who serve, I do have a special place in my heart, so something, I'm just throwing an idea out there, you know, as veterans. We, we make up a substantial amount in Jackson County, and we need a place, we need a place to be able to come somewhere and, uh, engage. So just to throw out there, these are all things that can be packaged. Next slide. So real quick, a timeline that is projected, uh, this is very, you know, uh, simple based, however you know, just as well as I do when you're dealing with grants. Uh, timelines can be pushed forward or they can be pushed back. So the first phase will be land acquisition, planning, and community outreach, we're gonna reach out to every, uh, civic organization. Uh, there's a lot of people out in the community that have things, they have pictures, they have artifacts that they keep with them that we can put into as an exhibit. Uh, we also have preliminary stages, it's getting more grants, each stage of grant acquisition. Uh, construction and planning, execution, and then staffing. Next slide. Benefits and impact. What is not mentioned is jobs. Between the museum staff to include gift shop and the Project Save staff, we approximate ten to fifteen jobs. We created in conjunction with volunteers, internships, and community service programs. That'd be clear, fifteen percent of the organ, any organization's project cost, uh, comes from land, so selling on just land is not gonna do it. A museum and a cultural arts center serves as an art market, it's a place of recreation and meaning. Promotes Jackson County's culture and the prestige of our patri, our patriots. Tourism is a cultural activity that directly connects to museums. Tourism does not exist without culture, we've got a lot of that. Monumental impacts toward turning endeavor into a beacon of light and a hope for Jackson County. Museums equal tourism impact, tourism impact equals economic impact. So the good thing that we have going for us is that our number one competitor is not big county, contrary to popular belief. It's places like Cordial, Georgia, and Gaston, Alabama, which means we don't have to compete with trying to be an extension of a beach. We can actually expand on our richness and our history, we have a lot of. Next slide. Success factors, being co-located with Ja, within Jackson County attractions, so. Would not make sense, and it came to my attention, it would not make much sense for me to have a state-of-the-art museum. That was not located next to where all of the Jackson County attraction is at Endeavor Park. This wouldn't be feasible, um, and, and to add more to it, it would be competing, and that's what we don't want. Want something that would be co-located, and it requires, and it also offers a, a range of ideas and packages that could be put together for our TDC. So as people come, we also want his and beds, so think on this idea. Someone came and they decided to want to go and see one museum, one attraction, well, they'll go and they'll leave that day. But if they're so given and drawn to other attractions, they'll say, well, we'll come to that tomorrow, that's his and beds. What we want to do is create a path, create a doorway. Then in order to finally reach a place that is of understanding and reconciliation. We wanted to have something that is prosperity, shows unity, because Jackson County's story is deeply rooted in the American story. Deeply rooted in the American dream, we don't have just a checkered beautiful past, but what we have done, we've went through time and time again, and we've shown people what right looks like. What togetherness looks like, and something that expands on culture, something that expands on what is the beauty, that's what we need. Grant funding. The abundance of specific African American historical preservation and museum grants make it where we won't be competing for separate grants when we're talking about this other museum. We would not be, uh, asking for anything on the same level. The Emancipation Day Festival of Northwest Florida is a five oh one C. So it allows for grant acquisition and matching opportunities when it won't be done outside of Jackson County. We're creating complementary attractions, niceties, packages, as I said, I stated before. Will increase profitability and entice patrons with more varied, variety, and more to explore required extended stay. Location complements attractions rather than creating unnecessary competition by building other site locations. And again, it enhances on the community pride and positivity. The word endeavor. Word endeavor is defined as an attempt, exertion of effort to achieve a goal. I think that goal is based on specific strategic actions that must be taken to increase competitiveness and competitive opportunities. Now. What we deem is necessary. Speaks volumes, who we are. I want to end by saying that. Great men, great people do good things for people. That's selfless service. And great men also build bridges, create legacies, likes of which they know they never see or they never cross. And that's what I'm doing today. That's what we're trying to create. Identity, culture, American pride, pride in our services, pride of our country, pride of Jackson County. This is so needed, it's so daunting at this time. Too many things out there to separate us and divide us, and this is the one thing we're. Last slide. Supporting resources, of course, Florida Statute one two five point three five. Gives you the ability to sell in your property, African American Cultural Heritage Action Fund, that is one of the grants that we had to, uh, step back from. Because it would be better to know for sure what, what properties we would be, uh, requiring in action is grant four. Uh, Florida African American Heritage Preservation Network, that is a organization that we are a part of. Uh, which provides us a wide range of support, uh, especially when it comes to, uh, help with these museums, resources. The twentieth of May, the history, history and heritage Florida's Emancipation Day Digital Project, that is a project that's actually going on across the state. We're part of that as well, and Institute of Museum and Library Services, uh, they have been great, uh, been a great resource. Allowing us, um, a lot of opportunities when it comes to these grants, building. Pending, next slide, pending your approval, uh, and pending your questions, that is if.
Yeah, real quickly, and before I open it up to other commissioners, um, I think in one of the earlier slides, you'd indicated you needed approximately two to three acres, is that kind of what you're anticipating?
Yes.
What, what size building, Byron, do you anticipate, uh, building?
I'm not, uh, because I also understand operating costs, I'm not trying to go somewhere and have something six, seven thousand square feet. Looking at something to be about three to four thousand square feet in addition to that cultural landscape, that landscape, uh, will kind of open up. So we're gonna have the, the cultural arts museum, where we'll be able to have a wide range of activities, and then the outside part. Will be designated for a lot of that outside space, but inside, we'll be able to have plenty enough. Um, I'm also looking, if you look at some of these slides in the background, I tried to throw some subliminals at you all. But we're looking at the idea of utilizing barn dominiums. So it still gives a cultural feel of Jackson County and our farm, uh, background, but it also has a state-of-the-art look. So that is very cost-saving as well, won't be requiring to spend too many millions.
I know that I had met with you and, and David Melvin, I think at this point in time, what I would probably suggest is. Um, there's probably a number of different areas that, uh, would fit, uh, what you would need and would also, uh. Fit within the master plan of what we're hoping to do out there, I would suggest maybe getting with David. And coming up with, uh, you know, a couple of three locations, uh, that fits within, uh, our master plan of what we're trying to do out there. And also would fit within, uh, yours and, and bring those back to us.
And my apologies, I also have Mr. Melvin here, he can, he can speak on, uh, a couple of the sites that, that we looked at, um. That seem more feasible, looking at the adjacent side of that, uh, the dining hall facility. Uh, that would be perfect, because that is the, uh, museum circle, I believe, uh, Mr. Williams was explaining to me, and that'd be a perfect spot. Um, that way it would complement, so we even entertained the idea of, let's say, we're having a kiosk. Inside of the Museum of African American History where people would go, but they would only be able to purchase, you know, the package deal. They want to get an individual ticket, and they would have to, it kind of creates a hurdle for them, and, and make it where they get the full experience. As well as in the construction and the design format, you can have a place where, okay, if you're in that cultural heritage museum. You can be able to have an extension, you see a little bit of African American history, and you're like, okay, well, to see more, you can go here. At the African American History Museum, if you want to learn more about the Native American history, learn more about the farming history, you want to learn more about, you can go here. So it, it ties in and complements each other, not, not competing in no way, shouldn't fall.
I, I, you know, want to put David on the spot, but David, are there any of the existing buildings that are out there that, uh, might, uh, fit? Uh, you know, the bill for what, what he's looking at?
Yeah, I, I, I think so, and I, I think we can go out and look at, and I think you may have gone out and looked at, uh, some of those buildings, you know, kind of, uh. Our vision and goal out there, master planning that area is to kind of make it a, a cultural area with the Civic Center, Conference Center, they'll be there. I call it chimney area, the town square kind of area there, uh, hopefully we'll attract a restaurant or something like that there at some time, and. Dog park, and then of course we'll have the, uh, museum that we're just starting on, we got that extensive area out there, kind of to. Fit in what Byron was saying, that could represent agriculture, you know, you remember at the, uh, fairgrounds, uh, I'm not sure what the group was, that put live cabin and. And, uh, agricultural inch, uh, implements out there, and there would be a good way to, uh, incorporate that. You know, we did some initial, uh, master planning on that area, and I think now that we've matured a little bit more. In it, and the states put the sculptures out there and all, it's, it's time for us to work again on, uh, on doing some more master planning. And I think that might be the subject of somewhat of the March, uh, February twenty-first, uh, March, March twenty-first, I got a little more time.
My question, I've been here from the inception, I haven't seen the master.
Well, when I always say that's not anything we're getting paid for, uh, out there, but it is, but it's a, as a, as a. A goal of ours, and so we, we've presented, you know, some concepts and, and master plan, but I think it's, uh, time, and, and unfortunately, uh. With Kelsey engaging, I appreciate she just had an opportunity to go down to Ocelot County, who has a. Real similar where they've used their museum welcome center, and then they've. real similar where they've used their museum welcome center and then they've got a, a village, uh, down there that she visited. So hopefully she brings back a lot of ideas from that to, to start that, that process out there.
Uh, you know, we, we, we don't have a master plan that I put my eyes on either, but I think there's been enough decisions made now. Uh, with, you know, the autism going where it's going, the conference, I mean, the conference center being where it's at. Uh, the, the museum, the overall Jackson County museum and the old dining hall. And then I know that, uh, we've got an issue coming up before us a little bit later where one of the dormitories are going to be used. So there's been enough pieces of the puzzle put into place that I think you and Byron can probably get together and come up with you know, some options as to where this might fit and bring that back to us with a recommendation.
Yeah.
I know that we don't want to probably put it in the middle of that, uh, that area, you know, we.
Right, yeah. Something I thought was that, that'd always be an open ground area in the, in the circle out there, but you know, fortunately we've got a lot of land, uh, land out there. And I think if we do some good planning and master planning, uh, on it, actually got a, uh, a couple of landscape architects from Phoenix that are coming in this weekend to look at a lot of projects that we've got with Marianna. I want to take them out there. They've been, uh, done a lot of land planning on that and just, uh, see if I can get some ideas and all from them as well.
I'd like to go with you on that if I could, if it, uh, works out schedule wise.
Okay.
Well, I mean, is that something that you can maybe bring? I mean, I, what I'm hearing is that you, you're asking us to, to, to actually give you, uh, two or three acres, actually commit, giving two or three acres of property out there. What I'd like to know is where that's at, uh, before we make a, make a determination on that.
Yeah, I think we got to nail it down. Are we talking two? We talking three? Are we talking ten? What are we talking about?
We're talking three acres specifically to be the adjacent side.
And what side? You're gonna put up a three thousand square, three to four thousand square foot building, which is less than a half acre. So what are we, what do you need three acres for?
We need the three acres for also the cultural landscape that's outside.
Now, explain to me cultural landscape. I saw that and I said, what is that?
You have to get yourself educated on that there, Commissioner. You have to do that on your time, not mine. But I, I would be brief. Uh, it is basically an outside park where you have monuments, murals, et cetera, so that people can walk and engage.
Okay.
Right.
And I, I think as you talked about, since you're co, since we're co-loading, locating this close to where the museum is, I think we ought to be able to joint use parking. I mean, there's no sense in building a large parking lot for, uh, your, this museum and another large parking lot for, you know, so if we locate it properly, hopefully we can cut down on some of the, the cost of providing parking for it.
Correct.
So, and that all comes out as, will flush itself out as part of the, 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 uh, pre-planning process. Question.
Question I have, which I can understand three acres for expansion. You know, if it goes good, you may want to build something.
And another consideration is schools, the school buses.
Another thing that concerns me is, and they may be provisioned for that. If some reason or another you don't build. Or down the road in the future, something happens you really want to locate. That property and building revert back to the county.
So to be clear, um, I have no plans of relocation.
Understand that. As long as you don't, then no problem.
And if that needs to be in writing, I'm more than, more than glad to do that.
As long as you stay there, it would be no problem for our concern. But if something happened, you did, something happened and you had to leave. I think all that, and it may be provisioned for that, need to be kind of kept in a way that, that comes to stay with the county. Not be sold. See, if you left there, then you have that building, say, well, we need to sell that building. Well, you're going to end up with all kind of different other things coming in. I think the county, if it revert back, then they can, and task something else to come in.
Correct.
And kind of keep it all together.
For a second.
Just taking others like you, applaud you and, uh, commend you on your efforts because what, that's what we need to continue to have foot traffic coming to Jackson County. You know, to look at all our cultural, uh, activities and things. Uh, but also I just want to encourage you to stay on top of the grant process. You know, because you cannot work too hard enough to stay on top of that. And I would support any effort that, uh, will raise this museum to fruition, but to make sure that we try to utilize the buildings and things we have out there.
Correct.
Mr. Crutchfield, in the past, we have talked about having a clawback reverter clause. Uh, in anything, are you wanting us to lease you the property or you want to buy the property or give us, you, us to give you the property?
Give you, you, you.
I figured that's what you were going to say.
We're giving land to everybody else, why not me?
Well, I got some questions then that we're going to be giving, you know, we're going to basically go in partnership with you. So you have a corporation, right?
Five oh one C, but now.
Is it?
I know the county, the partnerships are not a profit organizations.
So. I don't know enough about your organization. To be comfortable. Uh, how many people do you have on your board?
Five.
And who are they?
Rank Lawrence Dickens. Lorraine Dickens, uh, Williams, Whit Bryant and myself. It rotates every year. Uh, last year, uh, Katrina Williams, Nikita Williams was my secretary. And my, uh, finance person. So we rotate every year. We definitely have more people coming in. I actually have, uh, someone from Kentucky, someone from Fort Rucker as well. So, uh, this will be an open organization. It won't be private. So it'll be open to the public for anybody, even yourself, if you want to be a board member. If so, you feel that it's not to your likings, but you have to be duly elected. That's the way it works.
That's fine. Um. What is the net worth of this board?
We're a startup.
The organization. I'm not asking personally.
The net worth of the organization?
Yeah.
A startup, not a organization, not a network.
So we're going to, where are you going to get this? Four thousand square foot building? You're probably talking, what, a million bucks?
Yes.
Where are you going to get it?
Rent funding.
Grant.
And we have, we're being located, being located on Endeavour Park will allow us to visit and match, uh, anything over five hundred thousand dollars and.
If we give you this land or convey it to you. You can apply for a grant. Is that correct?
I can apply for a grant regardless. That's going to happen regardless. Once again, it makes more sense to put it in endeavor and put it in a location where we'll be competing with what would be attraction in Jackson County. I want to, I want to backtrack for a second because there's a bit, it seems like a bit of skepticism on your end. But we've been in existence for about four or five years now and everybody in, in, in this room to be the county administrator.
I was on the board when you came and we approved your Emancipation Day.
And I'm, I'm grateful for that, but there was no skepticism then and there have been no skepticism thus far. So I don't understand, but it seems like, I don't, don't, I'm not putting words in your mouth. I'm not trying to make this, I don't want to sidebar this, but it seems like we're on the level of necessary. Seems like you feel like it's not so much necessary. And if we're going along those lines in a month that is Black History Month. That had to be created, excuse me, that had to be created because those felt that that history was unnecessary for the contributions of American society at the hands of African-Americans. It's not so today. This is very necessary. And I don't see the skepticism with anybody else, whether it's putting the dog park out there or whether it's putting and selling bees out. You don't have skepticism. If you wanted business plan, you'll get it. You want to know more about the board, you can get it.
I would love to know, I'd like to see your business plan. Cause I want to see what, what are we going to be giving the land for? And what's going to happen like Commissioner Crutchfield said?
We just, I just spent fifteen minutes explaining what we're gonna do with land.
You don't get the grant, what happens?
I will get a grant.
Okay. And then if you get the grant and you build the building, you got to have money to set up the exhibits.
So you want, so you want, so you basically are curious on how am I going to create, uh, funding and operational costs on a consistent basis? So we can get back, okay, we can get wrapped back into Project Save program and the museum itself. I understand museums don't make much, much money, right? But Project Save, this program, we're, we're doing it and conducting it in a way that's similar to, uh, how can I put it? Uh, Planet Fitness, for instance. I'm going to have a twenty dollar Planet Fitness membership and forget all about it. Well, for these kids, nineteen, twenty dollars a month to be able to come after school and summer, right? That timeframe, which is so pivotal when kids in that risk, you get in trouble. They'll be able to do things. They'll be able to have projects and things that they work on, but it only will come at the hands of them succeeding in their regular academic schoolwork, which means we're going to have teachers, we're going to have part-time teachers. All of this is going to keep them in play. And if we're successful, those that can't afford, will get sponsored, will get paid for, and we can tie it right into the school district. Right now, that end of the year field trip that we have going on every year for the Emancipation Day Festival is no longer going to be about, uh, vendors, et cetera. So end of year field trip, every school will rotate grades every year to learn and educate and expand. And it also checks the block on a lot of the state requirements. So in doing so, we're tying relationships within the county. It's a never-ending road that that money, that twenty dollars a month, that continues to get circulated every day, every year, every month, annually, will be able to hit on some of those project costs. We're not going to be able to get all our money, our operating costs from grants. I completely understand that. So we have to come up with avenues to be able to continue. I also donated a children's book, also completing another one. So we have various programs that's going to generate revenue, not just selling tickets on museums. And that's very aesthetic for Endeavour Park. If, 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 uh, tourism is coming out there and they see this community engagement, these kids out there, they're learning it, you know? This is a great place. It's a great place to be. It's a great place to live. Not only do you have a tourism problem, you also have a workforce problem. You also have, uh, housing problem. But in the meantime, between time, we can touch on this tourism.
Well, let, let's do it like this because again, I don't, I don't know if I was really judging skepticism on Commissioner Peacock's part. I think he's just asking some questions and trying to familiarize himself with.
As Commissioner, we are responsible for that property out there. I am not opposed to the museum, okay? I just want to make sure that we go down the right path. Uh, that we do our due diligence before we sign on the dotted line. Giving, conveying two acres, three acres, whatever it is.
I'm, I'm more concerned, I think, as an individual commissioner is where this three acres is. And to make sure it, you know, because I, three acres, there's how many acres are out there? I mean, I want to see where that three acres is. There's going to be, there's going to be a piece of property that works for you and there's going to be a piece of property that works for me. And we just need to figure out where that's at.
Well, specifically, I, I, we were looking at two locations. Uh, we were looking at the old medical building within those structures, if, if it would be feasible. Or just the open land property right next behind that water tower, you know, to, if you're facing the dining hall, it'll be to the left of it.
I, I would just like to know more about the plan before we get to the point of conveying property.
I, I don't think we're at that point right yet, but, uh, I think we can, we can potentially get there. David, go ahead.
And, and to Mr. Crutchfield, you know, I get approached by a lot of people talking about the property and, and everything out there. And to me, we want to balance, you know, I want to be protective of the county and that, that property that we have on that south campus there, you know, in a way you want to be careful on giving away your, you know, title to different pieces of property there. But at the same time, when you get in, you got an entity that wants to invest several hundred thousand dollars, a lot of times they've got to get a bank a loan and they've got to have title. So I, I'm just saying all this for us to think and we'll work through the process and work with Michelle to come up with, uh, uh, agreements on it. I'll use the example, some, you know, always kind of talking to somebody about that boiler room down there becoming a restaurant. And my thought is, is the county would be glad to kind of give that property to somebody if they invested several hundred thousand dollars there and, and made a viable restaurant. But then you got to kind of protect yourself if that, if they don't make it, uh, you know, what, what can come in there afterwards of how do you structure that deal? But then somebody can't go invest several hundred thousand dollars there probably unless they have title, the bank's not going to loan them money. So anyway, that's, that's something that, that we need to work on and.
It's very complicated.
It is complicated and hopefully we'll have a lot of problems related to that of people coming in and, and wanting to do like Byron is and, and utilize a lot of the property out there. And that kind of gets in that, that master plan of how, you know, to me, we want to have a community that flows out there. I, I think that can really become a, a, a very neat cultural area for Jackson County, you know? We try to work with Marianna downtown where you got Highway ninety goes through us. It's hard to have a cultural area in, in, in downtown Marianna versus what can be achieved uh, out there. But that's a complicated issue that, uh, uh, Mr. Crutchfield was, uh, mentioning all and we, we need to, as, as now time for us and, and Byron's project will force us to go through that process of how can we protect the interests that he has and his investment out there, but at the same time, protect the county in the integrity of everything that, that goes out there.
And that was another point I wanted to make is, uh, the, a lot of these grants, the reason we had me to step back, because I was, I was actually in the process uh, going in the, the first stage of, the next stage of applying for one. And, uh, we had to fall back because if, there's a lot of these grants are dependent on the property that you already have. So if I go and apply for it under the auspices of, say, the property over it, um, on Mount Tabor Road, then if we say, for instance, worked it out, we got it at Endeavour Park, then it, it kills that whole process. I could draw back to, they went to, you know, step one. So it's, it's a gamble on both sides and it would make more sense to get this part locked in, uh, and know for sure before we move forward.
Again, what I'd like to see is when you, when you do come back and we're at the point that we can make a decision and we've got a legal model, uh, whereby we all feel comfortable conveying property, uh, to you, uh, but, uh, feel certain that we are protecting our, uh, our, our property rights in, in case whatever may happen that you're, you're not able to follow through with what you hope to do. Or somebody else in the future may, may want to, because I know that there's some other people that are looking at property out there as well. We want to make sure that we do protect the, 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 uh, the county as well. And what I'd like to see though on the map is specifically, uh, you know, what that piece of property looks like, what the configuration is and, uh, so that we, I can make a better decision on it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would make the motion, we table this request pending receipt of additional information. We don't have enough information.
I agree. I think we can.
And when they get it together, let them come back.
I think you get that information together pretty quickly and come back, you know, in the forest.
Correct.
Okay. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to table this until, uh, uh, the developer, and I'm going to call Mr. Dickens, the developer of this project, uh, has got a little bit more information. Specifically in my part, what that particular piece of property looks like, where it's located, the exact configuration. Uh, and then some additional information about, uh, your business plan and so forth.
That's amazing.
Got a motion and a second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you and good luck. Okay. Ten thirty, um, let's continue down the, uh, agenda. Item number four is board approval of physician services agreement renewal. This, Daniels.
This is an existing contract for medical services at the jail and we're just asking for the board to extend for a year under the provisions of the contract.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Mr. Peacock.
Second.
Second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number five, board approval of contract with Public Consulting Group with the Medicare Ground Ambulance Data Collection Service.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Chief Brunner to step up for these two. I believe he's spoken with all of you about them, but just in case there's any detailed questions. Um, so we're asking for board approval of contract with Public Consulting Group of Medicare Ground Ambulance Data Collection Services. Do you want to add anything on that?
I don't. We had some really good conversation with all the commissioners, uh, and we also have PCG Consulting Group on the line with Fred, in case any of the, uh, commissioners have any additional questions.
I think, uh, Mr. Brunner, you were able to, uh, talk to each one of the commissioners individually and, and kind of go through the program with each one of them.
Yes, we were.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve this request.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, a second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number six is, uh, excuse me, yeah, item number six, board approval of the contract with P S, PCG for the State of Florida Public Emergency Medical Transport Supplemental Payment Program. That's a mountain.
That is a big mountain. So this is the other side of the house that would return, uh, the Medicaid funds that we are not recouping for the county. Um, this would be an ongoing year-to-year thing that we would apply for these Medicaid funds through the Agency for Healthcare Administration for the state.
And we would pay this group six percent of whatever we were able to recoup.
That's correct.
Mr. Standard.
Yes, sir, across the state.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we approve this request.
I got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Mr. Crutchfield. Any other questions with Mr. Chief Brunner while we got him? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
One thing.
Yes, sir.
You and I talked about the tower up on Timber Lane Road.
Yes, sir.
I know we have space on there to put a repeater.
Yes.
You and the sheriff need to pursue that aggressively because that's a dead area of the county.
I absolutely agree. I spoke with the sheriff by phone Friday night. We spoke after work about meeting this week and gathering with Daniel a game plan of what equipment might be needed. I will also need to, I'll get with Wendy and Amber. We'll need to pursue a lease agreement on that tower as well. So, we're, we're meeting this week. We'll get the ball rolling. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Appreciate y'all.
Yes, sir. Item number seven, board approval to award the Baptist College sidewalk project to the only bidder. Ms. Daniels.
That's right. This is to TNT civil contractors, and we recommend board approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Commissioner Peacock. Second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number eight, approval of the BSCOP grant application task order. Ms. Daniels.
This is to provide a task work order to DHM to apply for two grants, or, yes, Stevens Road and Ulysses Road Bridge.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Peacock. Any other questions, comments, clarifications? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number nine is the board approval for Little Zion Road easement. Ms. Daniels.
This is to clean up and easement for Little Zion Road to do with US Army Corps of Engineers. We received a letter notifying us that we needed this paperwork, and so we're asking for the board to approve this easement and authorize the chair to sign.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Commissioner Peacock. Second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment. Michelle, we're looking at Butler Road. Why they did Little Zion Road and not Butler Road, I don't understand. Do you, can you reach out to them to see if we can get a easement to Butler Road? Butler Road goes right through that thing. What? Well, we need it done. I was told to talk to her. Michelle.
Carrie Lydigan out of the Mobile District is who's handling this on the core side. So, they actually reached out to us. They've been doing a lot of surveys and remapping their areas, and they found this discrepancy when they reworked all their property lines. We haven't discussed Butler Road with her, but I can engage her.
Would you please do that, because I'm looking to do something on Butler Road in the future.
On the current dirt park?
Yeah, from Little Zion East, the River Road.
Okay, item number ten, moving down the agenda, is the board ratification of wildfire hazard mitigation, mitigation agreements. Ms. Daniels.
Yes, this was something that came up in between meetings that we chose to go ahead and do for some wildfire prevention. And so, we're just asking for the board to ratify the agreement, authorize the chairman to sign.
So moved.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock. Second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number eleven, board approval or ratification of Amendment One to a professional services agreement with Alday Howell for Indian Springs Phase Two C.
This is requesting approval of professional services agreement, Amendment Number One for Indian Springs Sewer extension Phase Two C. This change is due to adjustments in the Fagmat, which included changes in the infrastructure.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney and a second from Commissioner Peacock. Any other questions or any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Moving on down the agenda, item number twelve, this is board approval of Indian Springs Phase Two D. It's a work authorization between us and Alday Howell Engineering.
That's right, to design, permit, bid, contractor selection, and project management, we recommend approval.
Board recommends approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Commissioner Peacock. Second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number thirteen, this is board approval of Blue Springs Sewer Phase Two work authorization, again, between us and Alday Howell Engineering.
That's right, and same thing for design, permitting, bidding, and contractor selection and project management.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock. Second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number fourteen, board approval to retroactively declare an emergency situation in which wayside lift station required emergency pumping services.
Requesting just that, so the board retroactively declare an emergency on that situation.
Heard the request.
This will be to pay an invoice for grass and sun that performed the pumping service.
And again, it was an emergency situation. A motion from Commissioner Crutchfield. Second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number fifteen, this is board approval of a Peacock Bridge lease for 2023. Ms. Daniels.
We are continuing to work with the property owner to see what we can come up with to present to the board as far as purchase, long-term lease, et cetera. But in the meantime, we do need to update that lease per their request to twenty-six hundred dollars per month.
Which is the same amount as what we have been paying.
Well, with the previous owners, we were, and, and the new owners, we were paying a thousand.
Well, originally, I had negotiated with them to come down to a thousand dollars a month, so we could work through some of the details. But that never got fully executed, so we've had a little bit of a gap. But moving forward, they asked for it to be what the previous lease was at the end of last year. So, this is correcting that language and taking this from now until we can have a long-term resolve.
And we're, and we're continuing, obviously, to work on a long-term solution, because I think this board has indicated that it's important to maintain access at that point on the river, so that those processes are continuing to move forward.
Yes, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock. Second from Commissioner Branch. All those and any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving down the agenda, item sixteen, this is board approval for an FDLE Criminal Justice Information Services Grant with jail management system upgrades. Ms. Daniels.
Yes, this is a grant amount of three hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars, asking for board approval of the agreement, authorize the chairman to sign.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number seventeen, board approval to purchase IT equipment from a state contract for correctional facility software upgrades. Ms. Daniels.
This is approximately ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-four cent that will utilize the grant funding. We're just asking for board approval to make those purchases.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any other questions? Clarifications? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number eighteen, this is board approval of interim MOU or memorandum of understanding between Next Step and Endeavor Forward. Ms. Daniels.
Due to grant funding as well as legislative appropriation that Endeavor Ford received, which is the nonprofit arm of Next Step for the Autism Academy, we needed to formalize some kind of agreement to start having some formal understandings of who is responsible for what. And since they will be paying for salaries and different things, we had to have some kind of MOU in place, and this is what we're asking for the board to approve, to alleviate that need.
Okay, you've heard the explanation and request.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Commissioner McKinney, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any other questions? Clarifications, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number nineteen, this is board approval to award a project for the HHRP rental development. This is a rebid.
That's correct. So, this is, we have approximately a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars left in the rental arm of the HHRP fund. And so, we did put that out, I guess, twice, and we have received back from Endeavor Ford a proposal to utilize the hundred and eighty-seven thousand to rehab a cottage unit at Endeavor. And this would be part of our solution for housing for the autism students, but it also could be long-term housing, depending on how, how we work that. And so, we're recommending that the board approve this contingent on them being able to find the additional grant funds to renovate that cottage.
So, we know what the amount of renovations will be?
I think it was for approximately half a million, David. Is that accurate?
I mean, is that, that project's been bid, or, or is that an estimated cost? And this is for the building that's directly, I'm gonna say, directly.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's the one right behind the autism. Yeah, we, we've got plans to, architectural plans to renovate it with thirteen units in there. And Senator Trumbull and Representative Abbott have in their budgets funding for the additional, for the renovation cost of the project. How much it'll cost to renovate is a good question on it when you try to estimate costs today. But, but we have, it's over five hundred, five hundred and fifty thousand in that legislative request to go with this hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And we feel, you know, very good about that, cuz both our representative and senator have it in it. And surprise, 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 the governor put it in his budget. So, never had a project that started out with it being in the governor's budget as, as well. He doesn't have the housing part in there, but, but we think we'll be able to get that. We're meeting with.
I see on page two seventy-three in our book, says a million dollars. Estimated cost. We were talking about doing tiny homes. What happened?
Well, we're just trying to find funding and, and things to come up.
We can't use this funding to do the town in tiny homes?
Well, I think it would be, this is more economical, and it, and it works out well for this dorm. That's still a goal of mine, and I actually have a company that said they have built us one in Pennsylvania. And hopefully, we'll get it down here to, to try it, but, you know, we've shaken the tree. And told me that yet, but I'm hoping they'll donate.
They may not want it.
Well, I'm hoping they'll donate it in that regard, but.
I call the bones of this building, structural integrity. This building is in good shape.
Yeah, yeah, but it still, it still takes a lot, you know? You know, you know better than I do. It's probably two hundred dollars a square foot to renovate this, this building. But it works out real nice, you know? I was a little opposed to using those old dorms to begin with, but, and I can send you the architectural plans on it. It's really nice, cuz it allows individual apartments for our students. You got a common area for laundry and a common kitchen area and all like that. So, it, it's in real well. You know, I think maybe better than the tiny homes, at least for our student housing there to kinda have more of an apartment complex.
Are you going to put an elevator on the backside of that?
No, no, it'll, it'll just have stairs, and that's a question of God. Well, it's a new stairwell, taking out that existing stairwell and putting in.
Buildings had to be renovated. Their stairs had to be provided at some point after they were built.
Yeah.
Provide accessibility.
Ground and everything around there, and it works out real well that it's close to the, to the school there, so we're.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I, I think it'll work out very nicely out there again. And, and again, that, you know, on this piece of property, I think we're kinda going with the approach of just getting a lease from the county. So, the county always owns the, the property there. You know, I think Endeavor Ford's not as concerned about the money that they invest into the facility, cuz most of their funding is coming from grants and all, anyway.
I would love to see the plans. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we approve this request.
Got a motion to approve from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, David. Item number twenty is board approval of a letter of support to Jackson Hospital for Legislative Funding. Ms. Daniels.
Yeah, so we did this last year as well to give the letter of support for Jackson Hospital's legislative appropriation request that is to renovate the Golson property. I do know there's a representative here, if y'all have any questions from them, but we do recommend approval of the letter.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Peacock. Come on forward if you'd like to. I, I will say, I was at the city commission meeting not too long ago. I guess it was the last city commission meeting where I voiced a little bit of a concern about this project relative to stormwater. Mr. Melvin was at that meeting, and he and I and Jim Dean actually went to Golson property on Saturday while it was raining. And I think we've got a solution to address my concerns, and my concerns were stormwater coming off of that piece of property creating capacity issues with the existing storm ditch that goes downstream from the hospital and ends up going to Chapala College. But I think that that's a, a solvable problem, and so I have no support for it with this. If you'd like to state your name and.
Yes, sir. My name is Maggie Brooks, and like you said, I represent Jackson Hospital, and we just wanted to thank the county and each commissioner for your continued support of us. And like Commissioner Donifro said, we do think we have a, a solution for the stormwater issue. I think the plan right now is to create a storm pond where the ditch is now, so it'll collect that and hopefully not distribute it downstream.
Thank you very much, Maggie. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we approve this request.
We already had a motion. Yeah, we had a motion a second already. So, are there any other questions of Ms. Brooks while she's here? Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-one is board discussion of discussion, raise discretionary grant applications. Ms. Daniels.
Yes, so Travis Howell reached out this last week over this grant funding that I believe Commissioner Peacock had brought to his attention. And so, anytime there's a grant that we don't have a match budgeted for, or it's unusual or a large grant, we bring these to the board for approval. And so, we're just looking for board discussion and direction on what, if anything, y'all would go apply for. And I did include the criteria in the package. I know Rhett and Jeffrey also are available to answer any questions, or Hunter.
So, this, this grant is available for what? Repaving roads and?
No. This grant is from the US Department of Transportation, and there's several criteria that it has to meet. And one of them, one of the scoring attributes is interstate commerce. I'm looking, been looking for a long time at Bellwood Cypress Road, been looking for grants, and we've stumbled across this one. And it, prior to the coming of raise, it was something else, and the minimum request was twenty-five million. This grant can only go up to twenty-five million. So, what I would like to do is give this trial on them to put in a, a request to see if we could get this, there's no match, and go forward with it. I've, I've looked and looked and worked. I've I've looked and looked and worked, and I think this is a good solution to the problem.
The problem being?
Paving Dalewood Cypress Road from Cypress all the way to Dalewood and might even include Sweet Pond, the rest of Sweet Pond Road on that.
This grant can be used for paving dirt roads.
Yes, yeah, new new paving, not repaving. Yeah, yeah, it can be used for paving. There are several things it can be used for, but it can be used for paving dirt roads.
What about, what about Pusher Road? We've been talking about that for a long time.
I was looking on at this long before you got on the board, when Fujer Road even came up. And this is something I found, and I would appreciate the board's support in moving forward with this grant application.
So how how?
There are.
How long is that? I mean, that's a fairly.
It's a long road, isn't it?
Six and a half miles? How long's Pusher Road?
I will add, I just found this out recently, um, but you can submit more than one application. I don't know if we'd be competing against ourselves, but I would put that in.
Well, I think we ought to, if we can submit more than one application, why would we not?
Well, you got to have, there's certain criteria you gotta meet. And I don't know, I'm not sure that Fujer Road is going to meet it. It's more along the lines of interstate commerce type stuff. And the reason I'm saying interstate commerce, those trucks go from the mill in Cypress all the way to the paper mill in Georgia. So that was road would serve that purpose.
They need sixty-nine currently, I would assume.
They do, but this will save them eight to ten miles.
Well, I mean, it won't hurt to apply for those, though, would it?
Talking about it, they uh, uh, Pusher Road takes traffic off, could take traffic off of uh seventy-three to the interstate.
I don't think the, I don't think Pujer Road's gonna meet the criteria.
May not, but I mean.
Based on what I read, I may be reading it wrong, but uh.
As long as we can apply for more than one, why would we not? Because I, we're gonna have to pay for Pujer Road at some point in time if we move forward.
Well, I thought for you. The group that we were talking to said they would pay for it. I don't know where y'all are at with that, because I haven't been privy to the discussions. But uh, you know, gentlemen, go look for grants, we find them, go for it.
Sounds sounds like we have found one.
I found one.
I mean, I I would apply both of them. I mean, Pujer Road is definitely a need, I'm like.
I don't think it's going to qualify.
Well, if it doesn't, they can tell us that.
They ain't gonna get it, don't try.
Is there any?
They don't try, yeah.
I mean, we we're gonna be faced with coming up with dollars for pavement, push road, at least from Pebble Hill back to uh Penn Avenue. At some point in time, if we're gonna move forward with the housing development.
Don't you have bond money?
Yeah, but I don't have that much bond money.
You have a couple million.
Yeah, don't use it all in one spot, though, especially if the grant dollars is available for.
How much money would it take to pay the other side?
Uh, I'm sure it'll take twenty-five million. They're gonna request twenty-five million. And then, because there's some fillers to be done.
Uh, about three million a month.
Well, you got some.
Right away, work.
Well, I'll let the engineer determine the cost, but uh I I think we need to go for it.
Say we need to uh table it and uh, I know time is essence.
Can't table it.
We need to table this decision right now. And uh come together on occurrence, or especially meeting or what have you, get together, we decide together, boys, you know, what road we're going to select to go for this plan.
Well, you know, at some point in time, I know we've discussed this, and when I was with the City of Marianna, we went through a fairly lengthy process of of hiring a independent consultant to look at all of our roads within the City of Marianna and come up with a rotating list that we that we used uh as a priority and and worked our way down. And it was, there was a number of criteria they looked at.
Right.
When they were determining that, you know, the number of people that lived on it, the condition of the road. I mean, there were a number of criteria they used to to come up with this list. And we don't really have a list like that, do we?
There was a list created in the seventies. It lasted about one day.
Wow.
The board got away from it.
Wow.
Because they wanted to, and they have not, they never used the list. You'll also hear that people have said, we uh, they were going to pay to the churches. They did pay to a bunch of churches, but they left off a bunch of them. Uh, those are decisions that were made long before we were involved. But uh, I don't think tabling the motion is an option because uh we are, the time is running and we're going to apply. It's the end of the month, we have to have the application. Yeah, is so.
And who's gonna apply? Eric or?
Alday Hall.
Alday Hall, Eric here?
Is there any consideration given for projects that have already got planned? Because don't we have some of the engineering work done on on uh Pujer Road?
Pujer's a lot further along.
Pu- Pujer Road has, it it has all the plans done.
For the whole, the whole length of it?
Yeah, we did that under a uh legislative appropriation, I believe. I don't know what kind of points are given for that, but.
Well, that's something I would withdraw to tape my motion, but that's something that would support, something that's pretty close to shovel ready.
And then we can. It's got to meet the criteria, and I'm telling you, Pujer's not gonna meet it.
We, how do we know there?
I read, I read the criteria.
This is my, this is my first time.
I tell you what, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve this request.
We got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to, and what's the request?
The request request is to allow Alday Hall Engineering to apply for this raised grant to Dalewood Cypress Road.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to approve the application of grant funding for the rate, is it raise funds? Raise funds for Dalewood Cypress, Cypress Dalewood Road. We got a second. Motion dies for lack of a second. Now, do we want to uh, again, Rhett, is there, what's the application process look like? I mean, is it, is it a lengthy process? I mean, is it something, is it something that we need, need an engineering firm to make application for?
Um, I would think so, just because a lot of times it will have to be.
Construction.
Going off of our, our, our experience with DOT, you know, they want to see uh cost estimates, you know, a little bit of profiles of the landscape and things like that.
Can we, can we bring this up, and you think we can bring this up at the twenty-first meeting and have Alday Hall present? And still apply for it?
Yeah, we'll do a lot of that work to see how much has to be done ahead of that. Um, it may be something I could bring back some more information at the tail in the special meeting.
I was gonna recommend that, let us see what we can come up with by the end of the special meeting today. That might give more clarity.
No, I I'm like, because I, again, I, if we can apply for more than one road and and I'm not disputing what you say, but uh uh, I, you know, I'd like to apply for Pujer Road as well, because I think that's an immediate need that uh uh that we're gonna be faced with soon, uh with having a pace there if this housing development goes forward. So let's do that, uh, and we'll make a motion to table it until uh the uh we receive more information at the uh special meeting this afternoon.
Don't move, Steve.
A motion from Commissioner McKinney. Second from Commissioner Crutchfield, any other questions? Clarifications, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries four to one with Commissioner Peacock voting no. Uh, moving down uh the uh list, we've got item number twenty-two, which is board approval to declare Endeavor Campus Chapel baptismal surplus, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, uh, sir, this was a request from Sunrise Worship Center located at twenty-nine fifty-seven Hall Street for uh to do, or to have the fiberglass baptismal at the Endeavor Campus Chapel. Uh, and so we are recommending it's an unusable item and no value to us. Uh, the only stipulation is they have to remove it themselves, and you all have done this action before uh with some freezers at Endeavor. We did uh this same process to Evangel, and so same thing, we don't have a use for it, they just have to remove it.
I I actually had just to give a little bit more information. I had Sam Everett uh approached me about it and said that uh that it's a baptismal, but of course, we won't ever need that. I believe that building, David, is probably one that's more than likely gonna be going down. I don't, it's the one on the north campus. It's in pretty bad shape, so as long as they uh will come and move it and take it out, I I can see a problem.
So move with chairman.
A motion from Commissioner McKinney.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Branch, any other questions, clarifications, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item number twenty-three is to uh set a spec- set a special meeting uh for March twenty-first, Ms. Daniels.
Yes, this is the, to request, we want to talk about Endeavor as a whole Economic Development Committee policies and tourist development update. Um, mostly just for the new commission's benefit to bring them up to speed on where we're at. And we're asking for this to be March twenty-first at two P M.
And and this is actually going to be kind of a summary of everything that's going on at Endeavor and, you know, all of the various projects.
Uh, David will be here, Kelsey, of course, and then our economic development, Tiffany and Zach. So we're going to bring everyone up to speed on what's been done to date and hopefully get some direction on next steps on several items.
This is a Tuesday from Sunday.
Yes, sir.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
What time?
Two P M.
Two P M, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, got to set a special meeting on March twenty-first at two P M to discuss Endeavor. Need a second, second from Commissioner Branch, any other questions, clarification, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-four, Citizens Academy.
Just wanted to update the board that our second class will be starting in March, March first, it's a Wednesday from eleven to one. It'll run March through September, and then we will be giving each of you an opportunity, just like last year, to attend. We rotate through, and so every, some of you will get more than one opportunity. And um interested citizens can sign up on our website. We are up to how many, Dylan? Oh, we have twenty people signed up, and so the class is actually going to be capped at twenty-five. Um, so actually, I think we we pretty well got a, that's all citizens, right?
Yeah.
And then, and then. Okay, so we have a couple more slots. Okay, uh, so yeah, we've had a wonderful response and really appreciate the the public support.
One that I went to, and I think all of the former commissioners and and of course, uh, two that are sitting on right now, uh, had a chance to attend, and they were well attended. Uh, Dylan did a great job uh with uh his presentations instead of the other county people that did theirs. But uh I thought it provided a wonderful opportunity for us to uh uh reach out to the community and let a little, let them know a little bit more about what it is that we do as uh as a governing agency, so wonderful opportunity. Okay, anything else? We've got uh, we, uh, sorry, we've got the one item, which is uh, okay, this is an item, this is section six, section. This is the board direction on updated spring treat little little limits. Mr. Daniels, you wanna bring us up to speed on on that?
Sure.
At the, at the last meeting, we, go ahead.
Yeah, so at the last meeting, I was given direction to make some adjustments to remove the uh private property and also to remove the uh responsibility on the private services, private plantation services. So this revised uh ordinance does two things. It makes it makes those adjustments as well as the actual uh ordinance chapter that this is found in now. When I first started this process last year, we were in chapter seventy during the recodeification process. It was changed to chapter forty, so this updated language also addresses change in chapter of the order.
Has everyone had a chance, we just got this, so has everyone had a chance to kind of look through it?
And again, if if this language is uh suitable by the board, we will have to set a public hearing and go through the whole process once again to have this language adopted.
So really, the direction that we've not, uh, we've got to take today is if, uh, unless there's any um additions or deletions to this proposed revision, uh revised document, then we've got to set a public hearing.
Correct.
And when when we'd be, would we be able to do it on the?
The national would be March fourteen.
March fourteen?
Yes, sir. At nine A M.
Again, what is the uh?
I've got a question.
Go ahead, give me a quick up.
Uh, under paragraph B.
Yep.
Uh, which A tells you it's illegal possessing. So uh the launching and swimming area. So if someone walks up and they've got a container, what happens?
For the Spring Creek portion and for Turner's Land, then that container would be uh in violation.
Or you're gonna write them a ticket?
They can be cited, yes.
What if they don't know?
That's, we'll have proper signage ahead of.
You're gonna sign it?
Navigating towards the waterfront area, um, there will be signage indicating changes and enforcement of orders.
Who would actually be doing the enforcement for it?
The sheriff's office.
Just like any other time, the sheriff's deputy has the right to practice discretion. I mean, if 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 somebody walked up with a can and may say, I'm unaware, let me dispose, I'll carry this back to my car and get rid of it. That officer has some discretion.
That's right.
And I think our our sheriff's office and deputies have been pretty good at being able to uh practice discretion when it's, when it, when common sense allows. Uh, Commissioner Branch.
You have to witness, Michelle. Are you asking me on a legal basis or?
On a legal basis.
I mean, it's it's legally sufficient. Really, the only modification that we're making to your existing ordinance is to expand the definition of what a disposable container is. We already limit glass and styrofoam, so that's already being enforced. We're, with this modification, we're just expanding the definition of disposable containers. So right now, you already prohibit glass and styrofoam. So now we're just expanding that to basically anything that would ordinarily be thrown away.
Right.
So we've taken out the portion about the uh vendor. Correct. Being responsible.
In this, in this rendition, yes.
But we've gone more toward just the people littering.
Potentially, ideally, they're not littering anyway, but this will, this will prohibit them from having an item to litter with.
Right. Maybe.
It will be prohibited whether or not, you know.
Okay. Any other questions? We request us to set a public hearing for March, when? We request us to set a public hearing for March, when?
What, March fourteenth, nine A M for a vote here?
Nine A M.
And Chairman, I make a motion that we set a public here with March.
March fourteen.
Fourteen.
At nine o'clock.
Fourteen to nine o'clock, thank you.
Got a motion from Commissioner Crutchfield, a second from Commissioner McKinney to set a public hearing regarding the revised. Spring Creek ordinance for March fourteenth at nine o'clock A M. Any other questions? Clarifications hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Michelle, anything else from council? Will Ann, anything?
I do have a couple of things, so first of all, we do have an update on Mill Pond, uh, the dye study will happen on February twentieth. And the um, and then in March, they will actually do a treatment.
So just real quickly, uh, the dye study, for public, what is that actually in to involve?
So they will actually take the chemical dye and introduce it into the water and watch how it moves downstream, how it collects in certain areas. Where the solution, we'll call it, uh, doesn't carry. To the edges, make sure it'll actually move downstream as a complete unit, so it can then be used. With the same introduction method with the herbicide, make sure it'll have a full impact.
So they'll, they'll uh insert this dye at Blue Springs, basically, at the spring, at the head of the spring. And then we'll, uh, soon it'll be discernible?
Yes, so it will be a uh visual color that we'll be using. I believe, do believe it also does have some chemical traits that they can track downstream to monitor the uh. Concentration of the of.
So I I guess we'll try to notify people that live along the Mill Pond that uh. We'll be doing this test.
Notice or?
No, the the, it'll be on us if we want to provide that.
Did they say how long or do you know, I mean, will it, that dye? How far will it before it dissipates?
I do not know.
I'm just wondering if it's gonna get into like a river too.
It could, I mean, you're talking several miles and a lot, you know, several hundred thousand gallons of water, I'm sure by then it would be unnoticedable. But I can pose that question probably.
I think we just have a problem with it on down.
Right.
So they'll do the dye test starting February twentieth. It'll be a two or three day test period where they're, where they're gonna die in. And then uh you said that they'll actually do the treatment when?
Sometime in March, so that would give them time to analyze the results of the dye study. And then come up with a plan that'll be implemented sometime in March.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So.
Go ahead, Commissioner Peacock.
What are the plans? For the contingency, I should say, in the event their treatment doesn't work?
I haven't been involved in any discussions regarding that.
Is there someone we should be talking to? Well, I know they went out there last year and sprayed, and it was more like they put nitrogen on it, it just grew.
Yeah, on a much smaller scale, um, last year we did a treatment with the same chemical and did not see the results that were desired. But if it's not as successful as anticipated, I'm sure at that point they'll start developing. The next step.
Can we encourage them to be developing a plan, a contingency plan?
We can encourage.
How long, how long do you think it'll take before we know whether the results are, you know, are as what we were hoping for?
Within a month of treatment.
A month, it should start seeing some effect.
Yes, and so, so what they do is the uh, they actually take aerial photographs and. Adjust the uh, the color scale and you can see the changes in the vegetation under the water.
I guess worst cases, we don't see any results and best cases, all of it's gone.
Yes, sir.
You're dreaming.
Stay with them. Best and worst cases are, okay, any questions regarding the treatment, dye test?
Okay, and then also just wanted to provide an update to the board that we have been. Uh, not every Friday, but just about every Friday since uh the last direction of me to the city of Mariana regarding utilities. We've met as a group with them, including the chairman, myself and Rhett Daniels. And um, we have developed, I think we're pretty well to appoint an M O U. Again, a non-binding M O U, it's just a, hey, this is what non-negotiables for both parties would be if we took this further. Um, that we're pretty close to circulating, I think, uh, any of y'all can see at any time, we were just, we were kind of tweaking a few things. And then um, we did get an updated proposal from Bill Harrington to separate out the Cottonville system, so Cottonville has interest. If we were to move forward, they have an interest in doing the same thing as Mariana on the two thirty one system. And so uh I did authorize Bill Harrington for us to split that cost to update that proposal. Um, with Mariana and Cottonville and it's maybe four thousand on our part, something like that. So Bill Harrington is working on updating the proposal with taking Cottonville out of the mix. They, it'd be separate, so that's just an update on where that.
To supplement what Will Ann has said, is in the conversations that Rhett has had with the city of Cottonville, they've expressed a strong desire to uh. If they, if it's feasible for them, if it, if it works out uh, uh, where it is feasible for them financially to take over that system as well. So uh, they've expressed a strong desire to do so if it works out, so. And when you think we can have that M O U uh where we can, where we actually could take action on it if uh the commission decides to approve that?
Well, I think we were waiting to hear back from Bill Harrington, wasn't that what we agreed was the next step? And as soon as we got that back, because that, y'all really need that on the feasibility side before the M O U is really even necessary. Um, so I'm thinking in the next month, don't you think?
Who's Bill Harrington?
He is the gentleman that performed the feasibility study originally.
The one that did the study originally?
Yeah.
He's, he's just basically updating that study.
Uh. I still think we need to separate these two items, we need to do the rates. And then continue on if you want to continue talking about giving it away or whatever. Uh, that's a separate issue and we need to address the rates quickly. Because we're going further in the hole, the longer we sit here and wait, the more money we're having to put into the pot. Everybody's going to get a rate increase. Mariana's getting a rate increase, everybody's gonna get a rate increase. So we need to adjust the rates and do it quickly. To move forward with this. So whether we do it today, we do it next, at our next meeting, I don't care. But. We just need to separate the two, I had it separated when I was chairman, you decided to put them back together. And I disagree with you, there's two separate issues. Uh, even if they have an M O U and we all look at it and love it. By the time you get the contracts done and everything, you're several months down the road and we're still spending money.
We've been spending money the whole time.
Well, I know we have, we've been wasting time. If I've been wanting to do this, gets taken care of for a long time.
I, I still think we need to wait, and again, I know we disagree on this, I still think we need to wait and and not raise the rates until we know whether we're. Going forward with the city of Mariana purchasing the system or whether we're gonna keep.
You're the chairman.
Well, it's not, I'm only one vote.
I know, uh, it's costing us money every day we sit here.
Okay, anything, anything else?
I do, uh, so we um went live with our I work system in Redden Bridge about a week ago, so. Uh, thank Fred and Lee for all their hard work in getting that uh pushed over the finish line. And so what will happen now is we, in the next week or so, we'll start reaching out to give you all personal training. Uh, if you'd like it, so that you can get real familiar with how to input those into the system. I've looked at it, it, it really seems very simple and then um. Shortly thereafter, we'll start making announcements to the public, we're not quite ready to really, really push it out to the public, because we're still catching. Glitches and bugs in the system and so they're really working through some of those, but as soon as we feel comfortable. The last thing we want to do is push that out and it, you know. Um, and so we'll, we will make that available on our website in the next few weeks.
That's good news.
Yeah, and then one last thing is uh, and and Jeffrey, you feel free to to speak to this one, but. Uh, one sixty two, the bridge that you all authorized for the Sig P grant does not qualify. And so he wanted to recommend y'all consider Freeman Road Bridge.
Right on Freeman Road, uh, it's in the Water Management District, there's, it's uh, always get. When the consortor goes out and they look at it and they tell me everything's wrong with the bridge, where there's no bridge there, it's two covered pipes. And then it's in the Water Management and all that, I talked to a couple. For, for lack of better terms, old timers down that way, and they said there used to be a bridge there and at some point there's just pipes there now. And they'll wash out between the pipes and we go back and patch them and all that, so uh, since the, on the C I G P grant, the one sixty two. It wouldn't fall under that, I was gonna say if the board would let me move forward with putting Freeman Road on that, on that.
Got your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve his request.
If that, there's a motion from Mr. Peacock, a second from Mr. McKinney, any other questions? Clarifications hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously.
Jeffrey, don't run off, I got a question.
Alright.
Go ahead.
One sixty two, the bridge up there, it looks like the rubber expansion joint has been pulled up. Is there any way we can get that pushed back down? My phone keep ringing and it's not like this.
I hadn't, I hadn't, um, I hadn't looked at it or anything, but if it is, we should be able to push it back in place or. Or something, I'm not sure.
About.
I really.
Four inches, five inches.
So.
What's causing it? What's causing it?
I'm not an engineer. I don't know.
So what I want to do, because of part of whenever we reached out on the C I G P grant and all that and they said that bridge wouldn't qualify. Because the state said it's not uh structurally. Insufficient, insufficient enough to be able to replace the bridge and I'm, you know, I'm like, yeah, I'm gonna look at it where people's done run through and then the river and. Bust it, bust it the concrete guard rail down and we had to put makeshift guard rail on it. I mean, to me is, it deems to be able to be widened and all that, we just got to figure out how to get it there.
Take a look at that expansion joint, see if y'all can get that straightened out.
Alright, I've got people that call me that go that way regularly.
Okay.
Is that the last item, Will Ann, that you had?
It was, yes, sir.
Mr. Peacock?
Uh, I got a request from General Jim Hart, and he wants to. Replace some existing signs on the edge of our right away or Circle Hill Baptist Church. Um, I'd like to make a motion, we approve his request, they're out on the edge of the right away, but I told him I'd bring it up. That's my motion.
How many signs?
Three, scattered around the community.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to replace three signs. Got a second from Commissioner Branch, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously.
Question, is that the Kennedy replacing?
No, church is doing it.
Church?
Yeah, right on the edge of the right way.
One up there, one a green, one. That shouldn't be a problem.
Just as an approval is for just the right way you permit essentially.
Yeah. They gonna do the work.
Anything else?
Well.
No. Mr. Branch. Yeah, Mr. Mr. McKinney.
Jeffrey, uh, Jeffrey, I'd just like to see you after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Clay, anything? We have a meeting. Tony, Maria, okay, very good.
Special meeting at one.
Special meeting at one o'clock, this is for the interviews of the broadband uh at one o'clock and we. We've given one of those groups twenty minutes for presentation, ten minutes for question and answers, so. One o'clock to three o'clock more likely.